Start chatting here. I've conducted the references for Mr. Schubert. He is now down near Orlando, I think, area.
Pinellas, wasn't it?
Somewhere down in central Florida.
Pinellas County.
I spoke to Mr. Jason Moran, who's the Chief Assistant Prosecutor. He was your City Attorney. And Jeff worked at Lister County for Madison Lake, Wisconsin. I missed it, I'm sorry. For from November 2019 through, I'm staring here. Oh, that's when he knew him was the 19th. That's got, that date is not long ago, I typed on there. I know my book is somewhere, but he was at Redding County through Madison Lake. He was in there from November 2019 to April 2022. Apologize, you know, three years. And he, you know, had many, many good things to talk about. He said he was a very independent employee, likes to work independent, but he's also a team player with his team and his staff as far as being a city administrator. Says, he told me Madison Lake had experienced five to seven city administrators. Morale was down in the city when Jeff joined them. He reorganized staffing and created a team spirit that drove positive attitudes and initiation excitement. I think I had that word wrong there, too. And most of the employees are still in place today. So he did do a lot of things to kind of bring it back and make it an exciting place to be and to work and all. Some of the examples have shown his initiative, and he did share some things in his resume and additional information. Budget and finance are one of his strongest skills, and Madison Lake was at a deficit when he joined them. He completely revamped and delivered a positive number, which is stated in his resume, and it remains stable today. He said, "We still use a lot of the same methods that he used at that time." He said, "It's honestly the most impressive he's seen as a municipality lawyer in all of his years of service." He does not require any supervision. He is very self-disciplined and very driven. His leadership was demonstrated by the cohesiveness of the team and the staff that he served, and they said he had a great relationship also with the council and the community. He didn't see anything where he could improve. Madison Lake offered additional salary to keep Jeff, but he wanted to relocate to Florida to be near his family. Madison Lake is similar town to Keystone with their lakes and their tourism image. His knowledge is relevant to managing the changes with Keystone and the experience of our lakes coming back, because their lakes are what drives their tourism and their money for the town, you know. And he said they have a huge, you know, folks that come to Florida, snowbirds that leave them in that area during the winter. So he felt like, you know, with us and the changes we have that are coming, it would be helpful to us. I spoke to Kent Hahn. He is the mayor there, or was the mayor there. He worked with him also from 2019 to 2022. He said he literally walked into a mess that was revolving doors with previous city administrators additionally, like he echoed the lawyer's comments, poor morale, challenging budget issues, and made huge transitions toward positive results. Said he's great with people, whether it's with council, staff, or citizens. He was very well-liked and respected. Some of the efforts here of initiative. The city of Madison Lake experienced a very challenging, delicate matter with their sheriff. Jeff initiated a third party for fairness with these investigations. As you can imagine, it became a big thing in the city, a lot of negative and positive. And it was one of those things where the sheriff was involved with someone, and then the wife found out. It was one of those real messy situations, kind of what he was saying. So he decided to remove, because it was under his watch. He didn't want it to make it a personal decision, so he hired someone to come in and do their own investigation, and then they made their decision from there. So he said he was really good with all the managing the media and all the stuff that was going on around that bit of a mess. So he's very savvy in working with grants and funding opportunities. He was involved in funding a new highway that went through their town that was going to be required for the city to pay for it, but he was able to get the county to cover those costs. It's very detailed, oriented, data-driven, also has mechanical skills that do come important, he said, especially in a town like ours. And he said one of his biggest things was, can you talk him into coming back? He said, you know, "We miss him and we wish he would have stayed," but he did relocate due to family, wanted to be near his family down in central Florida. So I don't know if you guys read, too, there was an article out there, and he does talk about this, his review down in Reddington Shores. And this gentleman, Kenny Later, is, was a former commissioner or council member, the way they're structured. And they're really structured very similar to us. But apparently, he said that, you know, he was, you know, very cooperative with everything he had ever witnessed him involved in. He said he has excellent leadership driving the sewer and underground utilities that were renewed under challenging circumstances. Doesn't require any supervision. His city manager skills are high. His Navy experience drives his discipline. He said he's very, very smart and respectful to work with. He said Jeff was always professional and formal when addressing others. But the biggest thing, he has open-door policy with everyone. But he, you know, he said he's great if you can let him do his job. The perception that I have, and I read what was on the media in the newspapers about the review, and what he's provided to us, very open book, and talking to Mr. Later, he said he stepped down for the very reason because of the way Jeff is treated. He said it kind of became a little bit of a groupie kind of situation with their council, and you just had certain people in that council that were trying to control him every step, like under their thumb. And the mayor was leading in this effort and would not let up. I mean, it kind of echoes some of what we've experienced. And he said it was none of his fault. He said he always did a great job, and, you know, he tried to deal with things that they had requested him to do, but then they would change something or say that they told him, but they really didn't tell him, kind of. There was a lot of misunderstandings with stuff. He does take ownership for it publicly. He stated that. As a matter of fact, they did offer him a $50,000 contract because he did decide to leave, or I think it was early this year, last year. And he decided to help them in the transition. He did agree to a $50,000 contract based on some conditions. But those conditions never were applied. So he decided this is not a good fit and decided it's time to move on. So, you know, stuff happens, as we all know. And, you know, I had the feeling that he sounds very invigorating, very exciting as far as the things that I heard about him. His resume is quite impressive with the things that he's done, the jobs he's had. You know, I think he's also got, also, yeah, he's back. He's got U.S. Navy that he was in for four years.
Purple Heart.
Yep. He's a, and he's been four, let's see, how many years? 16 years, let's see. Four-year city manager, 16 years total experience, U.S. Navy for four years. He also is certified with the City Manager ICMA. Looks like he's, you know, been involved in a lot of different things. He was very involved in lowering their tax rate from something like 20% down to 7.3 with some of the things that he did while he was there. And I think, you know, the populations of the towns were all very similar that he worked in, from what I can tell. I think Reddington Shores was 2163, and he left $125,000 salary. But he's like a BA in political science and a master's in public administration. You guys found anything other information?
No.
No? Any thoughts?
Thank you for doing that.
Sure. You know, I learned a lot. I mean, it was good to kind of go through that referencing thing. I, you know, I felt like I met three new people that I wouldn't mind getting to know. Right? It was kind of interesting. Okay. Well, I guess we are ready to bring Mr. Schubert in. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
I'll let you get your jacket off and have a seat. We turn the heat on because we're freezing.
My, my soon-to-be-wife over the last few days has been sneaking behind and pushing up. Well, she actually uses the app, but we've got a Nest usually. Whenever I see her playing on her phone, I have to walk over and wave at the Nest thing. How high did she turn it? Because in about 30 minutes, I'm sweating.
This room is either hot or very cold, there's no in-between. Well, we would like to say welcome to Keystone Heights and Happy New Year to you. We're happy to have you here today.
Thank you.
And we want to go around the table here and introduce ourselves.
I'm Steve Hart. I'm a retired attorney. I've been on the city council for 10 years.
Hi, I'm Christine Thompson, Vice Mayor.
Nina Rodenroth, Mayor. Just became mayor six months, well, April this last year. 52 years in health care.
Dan Lewandowski. This is my second time on city council. I'm a retired Air Force Colonel, and I'm currently a professor with Embry-Riddle Aeronautical University.
Busy guy.
He is a busy guy.
Yeah.
I'm Tony Brown. I've served in and out of the city government for the past 30 years. I'm a business owner here locally, and I've lived here all my life, except for one year, so.
Also a former military, as you all will know, Navy. I saw the ad on TV, "Join the Navy, See the World." I was living in Cape Coral. Joined the Navy, they sent me to Orlando for two years. Exactly how does this work?
How did you pick up a purple heart in Orlando? That's what I want to know.
Pardon?
How did you pick up your purple heart in Orlando?
I don't have one, sir.
Oh, I thought you did, I'm sorry.
No, sir.
So tell us a little bit about yourself, Jeff.
Well, I spent a lot of my younger years reading. I've always been a history buff. And in all of history, we have the stories of people, self-made men and everything. It's the hard work. And for many of my early years, that's what I was trying to do, is prove that the reality is, is times changed over the centuries. And finally, in 2010-ish, I decided it was time to go back to school and finish my degree. I spent a lot of years in restaurant management, just kept hitting that glass ceiling. Like I said, joined the Navy. Was assigned to Submarine Squadron Eight out of Norfolk. So we had some fun with that. Yes, they really do creak and groan when you go underwater. But finished my degree, went into teaching. I've always had a passion for service in government. I taught government. Got elected to city council in Groveland, Florida, and was working on my master's degree. My city manager came up to me, we had bi-weekly meetings, and he says, "Well, sir, you know, you're almost finished with your master's. What are you going to do?" And I said, "Well, Mike, I want to be like Mike." And the short version of the story is, he said, "Go apply to some small towns, doesn't matter where. No one's going to hire you. You don't have any experience, but I've got an idea. You've got a town here, local, that's going to be changing their form from strong mayor to a council manager. It's a small town of 900. It'll be a great place for you to get your feet wet. It's close by, I can mentor you, and it'll be wonderful." Sounds good. I applied to six places. Five of them called me for an interview. The first one scheduled was Madison Lake, Minnesota. So I flew up to Minnesota, sat down. My interview was supposed to be at 10:00. They were running behind. I started at 10:45. We finished at 11:45. I went to the local sports bar to watch my UCF Knights play football. I missed a phone call. I saw it at halftime. And it was a search consultant that was handling their search. He says, "I've been instructed by the council to begin negotiating terms of an offer." We talked for about 15 minutes. I got off the phone. First call I made was to Mike. "Mike, explain to me how this was supposed to work again."
God's country.
He's like, "No, how'd the interview go?" And I said, "No, explain to me how this is supposed to work again." He said, "No, how'd it go?" And I said, "Well, I have an offer on the table." He says, "You're kidding me." I said, "No." So as you know, I spent the next two and a half years in a very nice little town, a town above, lakefront town, 1,500 people in Madison Lake. And I found that my passion was well-suited to the career. I met a lot of great people up there. I spoke to the mayor. I popped in to get a copy of the city budget about an hour ago, and I spoke to the mayor for about two or three minutes there, and I told her, I said, "You know, I'm still friends with all of the members of council there." The vice mayor calls me about once, twice a month. The mayor calls me at 11 o'clock at night because he doesn't understand the time change. So it, great people, and quite honestly, had, my family is here. My family is in Lake County, and I'm, you know, this is an HR verboten question, but I am 55 years old with a two-and-a-half-year-old daughter. And so the drawback home was very strong. Had Madison Lake been close to my family, I probably would have retired there. Great town, great people, and just, I can't speak, you know.
Where is Madison Lake?
If you're familiar with southern Minnesota, it's about 10 miles outside west or east of Mankato.
Sure. I used to live in Plymouth.
Okay.
In the cities.
Yeah, it's Mankato, Eagle Lake, Madison Lake.
Okay. Oofta.
One of the best, we actually got the governor's fishing open there last year, so.
Ice fishing?
No, actually, it's after the ice breaks. But I never did understand the whole concept of ice fishing. Friend of mine kept trying to get me going. They did get me to go out walking on the ice, but I never went ice fishing.
It's about drinking beer.
Yeah. Play something to do with it.
So that's me in a nutshell. I grew up here in Florida, Cape Coral, Port Charlotte. My most recent spot was Barrier Island out in Pinellas County. And we were supposed to be ground zero for Hurricane Ian, but he decided to make a right-hand turn, make a right-hand turn a little bit early.
Yeah. It's crazy. Well, we have some questions, and we're going to ask Ms. Silver, our county city clerk, to ask them for you, and we'll be doing some grading through the process.
Our first question is, why do you want to work for the city of Keystone Heights as the city manager?
Well, the simple answer is, is I really like smaller towns. I like that, the small residential feel. At the same time, small towns bring unique challenges. They don't have, they don't have the multi-billion-dollar bank accounts that larger cities do. We have to do a lot of things, shoestring budgets. I mean, that's the nature of small towns. Keystone Heights, it's close enough to Gainesville, it's close enough to Ocala, so that my wife won't give me a whole lot of grief about finding a nail salon. But I don't fit in a larger town. I don't, just my personality, my desires, my goals. As mentioned before, I'm 55 years old and I'm only five years in municipal experience. I've had executive experience in other, in the private sector. I've owned a few businesses. I do not have dreams of grandeur of running the city of Orlando or the city of Cape Coral. That's not in the cards for me. I enjoy small towns and Keystone Heights. Driving around, I mean, look at the parks, look at the, look at the potential that's here. Look at the great little community. Yeah, you've got some fast food places, but you've also got some really great little restaurants. You know, small businesses, things like that. And I prefer to be able to have an open door. I prefer to be able to say, "If a resident has an issue, come by, knock on the door." Hopefully, I can make, you know, I try, I try my best to make the time to be able to speak to them. If I have something pressing and doesn't, we'll sit down for just a moment. Okay, let's schedule a little time. When can we do it? But I like that one-on-one ability. In a larger town, that's just not possible.
What can you bring to the citizens, taxpayers, if you become the city manager?
Pardon?
What could you bring to the citi, I'm sorry, to the citizens and taxpayers of the city if you're hired as city manager?
I'm, again, smaller towns have tight budgets. Smaller towns need to be creative. When I was in Minnesota, I was a board member of Minnesota Association of Small Cities. We didn't, we don't have an equivalent of that in Florida. But that did give me, we've got the League of Cities, but it's a, they were a separate group. They focused on cities of 5,000 population and smaller. One of the things that I really like to do is advocate for my city, be that at the state, regional level. In Florida, we have, there's a lot of state money that's out there, but you have to build those relationships with the state officials. Right now, we have a huge onslaught against home rule. We have a huge onslaught from the state. One of the things that I will bring, I understand how Tallahassee works. The new Form 6 that's costing so many cities, city council members. We have an attorney on the board. We have another attorney sitting over here. They've been trying for 30 years to get that home rule obliterated. If you can get city councils to become non-functional by resignations, it's a backdoor. I am an advocate for small towns, both state, regional. Taxpayers can count on that. As far as making do with less, that's all I've ever done. I've been in small towns. Madison Lake, when I took over, was deficit spending, 20% of their budget. We balanced their budget. We improved their services. So what the citizens and taxpayers can look for from me is an advocate for our town. How can we make sure that we're getting our fair share from the state? How can we make sure that we're getting the best bang for our buck? When the state of Minnesota came through to rebuild the highway, I was able to get $66,000 in concessions for state, for city projects, and $320,000 to redo the lighting along the state highway that they weren't planning on doing. So I, again, I am a very strong advocate for my cities.
Have you reviewed any or all of the city of Keystone Heights ordinances?
I have given a cursory glance. However, I feel that should the position, that would be a relatively short learning curve to be able to pick up. I find many ordinances are very common, and every city has its unique set because you react to circumstances within the city.
Are you a lawyer currently?
I am not.
Do you have a copy of the government in the Sunshine Manual and use it for reference in your case?
Being a page from Florida, we have some of the most, we have, well, I'm not going to say some of. I will defer to the attorneys in the room, but we have the most open public records law in the country, even to the point of, to this, to the detriment of operation of the city. So you have, there are two things I keep on my desk all the time. One is land use in a nutshell from the West Hall series, and the other one is the open, the Sunshine Guidebook. It's a little tablet, little divot up on the corner of my computer so I can open that PDF.
How would you avoid violating the Sunshine Law by discussing or otherwise communicating with the city council members about pending matters that could potentially be voted on by the council?
With that, knowing what Florida is, one, I don't, it, I don't. It's not my business how any council member is going to vote. It's not, it's my job to provide information on various, on what is coming forward, what are the alternatives. When discussing with council members, I try to keep that as an informative session and not, I can answer, I will answer questions pertaining to the topic. But we obviously, we can't speak to hypotheticals or what other elected officials may be thinking or asking. You have to be very cautious about, "Oh, that was the same question that councilman so-and-so asked." You have to be very cautious of that. And again, that's why those are the two books that I keep very.
Have you had any formal training in computer programs such as Microsoft Office, QuickBooks, Canva? And has your training been on the job?
Yes, yes, and no. I am very familiar with Microsoft Office. The, to the extent that in Madison Lake, we wrote an Excel spreadsheet that tapped into our finance software. We used MyExcel, we used that, we used data search functions within. I would like to think that I am very fluent in Microsoft Excel, including the data analysis tool packs. Again, the same with Word, PowerPoint, Publisher. Not as much Publisher, because generally, my city clerks have done more of the Publisher. But when it comes to the finance end, my favorites, finance software unfortunately is not available in Florida because Florida's finance laws are too weird for them to tackle. But Civic Systems has a very robust system. I know Tyler Technologies has also, they've got their new ERP Pro 10. They also have ERP 9. And as part of one of the businesses that I own, I did some side work doing bookkeeping where QuickBooks was the primary source, so.
If you were appointed city manager, what do you feel would be your role in the event that the city of Keystone Heights experiences a significant weather event?
Is there room for a cot over there? Well, I'll just simply use as an example Reddington Shores. Hurricane Ian was coming down on us. I put staff on emergency recall. I told, gave them a day off several days in advance so they could get their families ready. And the police chief and I reported to the ER, the Emergency Operations Center, the EOC, and I was on the island until it was gone. That is, that's not a negotiable. That's just a city manager's job.
How did you handle the COVID pandemic in your former position?
Oh, now we're going to get into the controversial stuff. I was in Minnesota. Minnesota was on a state lockdown. My city council did not want to close City Hall. They wanted City Hall to be open, so we stayed open. I informed my staff that city council wanted to stay open. We stayed open, and I gave them the option. If they wanted to wear their, wear masks in and around, then they would. I would not obligate them. However, if they wanted someone coming to see them to wear one, we wore them. We all, it was a small town. We all had separate offices, so it didn't really make much sense for us to walk, sit in our offices all day with a mask on if we didn't have anyone there. When public came in, we put them on because we didn't know what was going on. We don't know what they, what they may or may not be carrying. But city council wanted to stay open, so City Hall stayed open. It was the unique circumstance.
Are you familiar with the Black Creek Water Project and the impact it will have on the city of Keystone Heights?
I am not.
Have you ever managed a cemetery? If so, can you tell us a bit about it?
I have not managed a cemetery. However, I do know that there's a regulation book about this thing and how you'd have to handle all of those, everything related to them. I know enough to know that I don't know, but I can find out.
What do you know about smart cities and how Keystone Heights is involved?
I was just reading an article about that. Sensors instead of people, I like it. Keeping track of things without having to send somebody to go check. The closest we got in my previous city was Radio Read Water Meters, which doesn't really qualify as much. But I like the idea of having data. I am a very data-driven individual, and the smart city technology just provides us with a lot of data to be able to structure our budgets, our staff. to be able to structure our bu, structure our budgets, our staffing, our operations. So I, you know, that's something that, I was actually quite surprised to see a city the size of Keystone Heights having moved forward on that.
City growth on a large scale is expected due to the development of property on Sunrise Boulevard and the property behind Brooklyn Ways on Fox Run Road. In your opinion, what are the top three issues that the cities will have to deal with concerning these two developments?
Infrastructure, infrastructure, and infrastructure. A lot of MPOs tend to gloss over concurrency requirements. The City of Groveland, where I was a council member, is currently having some citizen uproar over some development. Because they've got a little two-lane road, and they're putting four thousand houses on it. Infrastructure. You've got to address the infrastructure. The water, wastewater, the stormwater, the road capacities. When developers, when developers are proposing a development, you have to make sure that you're holding them accountable to what they can do for concurrency. You've got to maintain the livability of our town. We have a character, small towns have their, each small town has its own unique character. And a bad development can destroy that character in the blink of an eye.
Budgeting experience is a definite must for any management position. In your former position, did you independently create, manage, and maintain the budget?
In both of my positions, most recent positions, I was the primary budget contact. The, my most recent position, we had a finance committee or a budget, finance slash budget committee that the chairman of that committee, about a month after I arrived, said, why do we need to be, even meet? Because we have him now. And I said, because I don't have all of the answers. Because I'm a firm believer in more heads and thoughts are better than one. I do not believe in dictating, I believe in that collaborative approach. Where I have been the primary, it's also been a very collaborative effort. It is my job as a city manager or city administrator to provide the council with options and guidance. But the policy decision is the council's. And the direction the city needs to go is in the council's hands. My job is to take that policy and make it work. Now, as far as managing the budget, monthly reports, keeping track of our expenses, keeping track of our income, making sure that you're on pace. One of the columns that I have in the budget software or the Excel spreadsheets that I've always used to track my budgets, one of them is a year-to-date percentage. Some of those concepts are going to be our insurance with the Florida League of Cities. Okay, two months into the city, it's going to be way out of whack because we've blown pretty much the whole budget. Well, it's because we made one payment. Two, at best. Sometimes it's quarterly, depending on the city. Last city I was in, we made one payment. So coming in October thirtieth, ninety-eight percent of the budget was taken up. So it looked out of whack. Other things you want to look at, what's your percentage of the year that is evaluated that's gone by? And how much of that budget have you used? If those two numbers aren't closely in alignment, you've got a problem. You have to make sure that you're keeping track of that. You've got to keep up to it, you've got to make adjustments. If you don't, you don't want surprises at the end of the year. At the end of the year, it's too late to fix it.
We are a small city, therefore grants are essential for funding projects. What type of experience do you have with a fee grant?
Most recent was in Madison Lake. Reddington Shores, their income level excluded them from many grants. Madison Lake, the most recent, police chief and I worked together to get the COPS grant. That got, we had, we did have a full-time police force that had a chief, one full-time officer, and three part-time officers. Minnesota statute was changing, part-time licenses went away. So we were converting our part-time. And we did get a COPS grant that paid seventy-five percent of the salary cost, cost of employment for three out of four years. So that did lessen the, the impact on our city budget. The, the good news on that is you only had to keep your position for one year after that, three years. Then if you eliminated the position, started to apply again. So that was the most, the most recent that I've had was the COPS grant from DOJ.
What background of knowledge do you have about community redevelopment areas, also known as a CRA?
CRAs, very unique beasts. You've got to keep the money in the zones. Groveland had a CRA, we used that money to redevelop our downtown. And they're still using it. CRAs are a great tool, but they have to be, you have to have the proper plan, you have to have the proper function in place. You can't, can't use them for a big event. The funds in a CRA are very restricted, as I'm sure you all are very aware. So when I was on the Groveland City Council, we had a meeting on a Saturday morning, or Saturday afternoon. The sole purpose was to park two hundred thousand dollars in a fund that was legal because the CRA manager didn't know what project he wanted to assign it to. And it had to be assigned. So, so we, we had a, we had a meeting to determine where to park the money. We were very, Fort Groveland is a very fast-growing community. So their CRA budget was significant. In a town of Keystone Heights, I'm anticipating we do not have a CRA manager that falls on the city manager's plate.
Describe your experience with local utility finances.
I have not been familiar with, as far as electric companies, no. Financing for infrastructure improvements, water, sewer. In Madison Lake, we did have some improvements that we fun, functioned through that. We did bond out about two million for roads and infrastructure in Madison Lake during COVID when it was only one point one percent. They were in debt up to their eyeballs, but at one point one percent, you can't say no. Especially with that eighty-year-old pipes in the ground. So my, my experience with that is just simply the water and the sewer. I did not have gas or electric experience.
Keystone Heights is going to have a centennial celebration. What experience do you have in any of those events?
City of Groveland decided, and I was a council member, I was not a city manager at the time. City of Groveland decided some years ago that they were going to own the Fourth of July in the region. So I've been tangentially attached to that as a council member. In Madison Lake, I and the fire chief were the point on what they call paddlefish days. We closed down Main Street and City, in the city. Good news is, it was not a state highway, so we couldn't do that. Main Street went the other way. And paddlefish days was a three-day event. We had a fishing tournament, one of the largest fishing tournaments in the region, in the southern region of Minnesota. We brought in a cover band that parked up at one end of Main, Main Street. They, we fenced it all off. We had alcohol sales, we had kids, we had parades. We had bounce houses in the parks, we had kids' races on the, in the parks. We had fire hose fights, where we strung a cable between a couple of trees. I, I have done a three-day festival on a couple of occasions, and they've turned out pretty well. In Reddington Shores, the Christmas celebration that they did, holiday celebration in government. Prior to my arrival, they had a fourteen-foot wall monarch tree that they bought eight years before that was supposed to be an indoor tree. The first task that I was given by the mayor was buy a Christmas tree. And I said, well, what kind of Christmas tree do you want? She said, better than what we have. I said, how much do you want me to spend? And she said, I don't know, we'll find out what they cost. So I gave, the next city council meeting, I gave them some cost estimates. And they told me to go buy an eighteen thousand dollar Christmas tree. So we had an eighteen-foot tall, eighteen thousand dollar panel Christmas tree. We had a real Santa Claus instead of one of our public works guys in a Santa suit. We had, now they, they'd done snow prior, but they brought in a snowmakin, an ice shaver and made a forty-foot by forty-foot pile of snow in one of the city parks. It lasted about two days, believe it or not. Go figure. So I, I've done, I've done a couple of events.
Do you have any relationships or friendships with current employees or elected officials of the city? Kent Blanding, local business leaders, Clay County, and/or Clay County City Public Officials, and representatives of the St. John's Water District? If so, please elaborate, and I can repeat that if you should wish to.
I do not. Keystone Heights is just far enough away, we're in a different water district. Southwest Florida Water Management District, I'm familiar with several officials. But St. Not in St. John's. My, with St. John's, Groveland is in the St. John's Water District. However, I did not have any interactions with them. That was on my, on the part of my city manager of my kind. I do know that he had a very unique thing that made them scratch their heads a little bit. So if they find out I'm from Groveland, they might ask me some questions. We bought a defunct golf course. Because our city was over its consumptive use permit and its well. The golf course had a well with a use permit. So we bought the golf course because the golf course was for sale for cheaper than it was going to cost us to increase our use permit. And then we had, we were two million dollars, we were two million gallons a day over. The use permit was five million gallons, the other three million, we sold the wheelie stuff. We actually made a profit on the deal. So that, that, if they hear that I came from Groveland, they might ask some questions, but I don't know of anyone in any of those municipalities.
You are asked to do something unlawful, unethical, or against the city regulations by a city council member. What would your response be? How would you move forward?
I can't do that. My ethics are, my ethics are my core. That's not a negotiable. I have been in that situation. It is not a negotiable item. I will explain to that council member, or that staff member, or that individual why I feel that I cannot do that. I will explain my position. But it is not a negotiable item.
The Florida League of Cities has bronze, silver, and gold level certificates for city managers. Tell us what you know about these certificates. How they can be used to make your city, oh, I'm sorry, how they can be used to make you a better city manager? And how they can improve the city?
I am not overly familiar with the Florida League of Cities. As most of my experience, you know, is in Minnesota. However, I do know that the League of Cities is a great resource for training, for staying up to date, for keeping up with everything that's going on, both in Tallahassee regionally. So I am a believer in ongoing training. You've got to keep up with things, nothing, the only thing that stays the same is that it changes. And so that's one of those that I'm not overly familiar, as I had a very full plate. I was drinking out of two fire hoses in my last position. However, I am very, I am a strong advocate for train, continued training and continuous improvement.
Goes right off of what you just talked about. Would you, as a condition of employment, participate in some type of education or training that would directly assist you in your duties while in the position of city manager? Such as one offered by the Florida City and County Management Association, or the ICCMA?
Whether it's required or not, I'm going to do it. And when I was in Madison Lake, I did, I had completed several of the ICMA trainings. One of them is, it's not the credential manager, I, I want to be very clear, it's not the credential manager. It is a certification in local government with emergency management. It's one of their certifications, but it is not the credential manager. I still have a couple more years as a city manager to qualify. But because UCF is one of the NASPA-associated schools, the good news is, one more year, I can go on the list, and two years after that, I can put the letters after my name. I've already done the management assessment through ICMA. I still need the years, I need a project, and I need the three sixty evaluation.
How would you handle conflict with the public? Also, how would you handle conflicts with employees of any various?
Well, the first thing is, is you don't let the conflict escalate, don't become part of it. You have to stay separate from it. Everyone has a perspective. In Madison Lake, my city clerk and my bookkeeper did not get along. They didn't like each other. They obviously had to work together. I find that ignoring it doesn't help, makes it worse. You have to address it head-on, but you have to address it tactfully. I try to hear people out, listen to the sides, explain how, what you're hearing. Try to find a resolution. Let, let the individuals try to find the resolution themselves. If they do that, you get more buy-in. They're ten, they're more likely to coalesce. With public information, let people vent. After you've let them vent, after you've let them talk, pay attention to what they're saying. Listen to, listen to their perspectives. They may have a very valid point. They may be misinformed. If you try to solve it before you, before you know, you're just going to make it worse. You have to listen, you have to stay calm. And let the solution form itself. Don't dictate a solution, let the solution form itself from all of the actors involved guided along. In the case of my clerk and my bookkeeper in Madison Lake, I sat down with them individually. Then we sat down as a group of three. And it was really eye-opening to see them start talking to each other without yelling at each other. Without getting upset with each other. That was, that was the ground rules I sat, I said, you know, we're not here to get upset, we're not here to argue, we're just here to find a resolution. And through the course of them discussing it, the bookkeeper thought that the clerk wanted her job. I don't understand why, because the clerk made twice the money and worked twice the hours. Because the bookkeeper was a part-time bookkeeper, so I don't know why she thought she wanted her job. But as push comes to shove, the clerk just wanted to understand what she was doing. We're a small town, we all wear many hats. Bookkeeper took that as an infringement. She came from a large accounting firm where everyone had their jobs and nobody bothered you. So there was a miscommunication there. Sit down talking about it, we, we solved the miscommunication. I'm not going to say that they ended up best friends and hanging out at football games together. They didn't. But we had a workable relationship after that.
Describe a specific scenario when you were faced with an unexpected issue and how you handled it.
A water main thirty-eight feet underneath Main Street ruptured at four o'clock in the afternoon on a Friday. At least that's when it came up. That's when we realized that it ruptured. Come to find out, it had actually ruptured about five days before that. It just took that long for the water to work its way to the surface. When you've got something like that, unexpected, it's unexpected. Unexpected things throw you for a loop. You've got to keep your calm, you handle it, you prioritize. In that case, we stopped what we were doing, we didn't, you know, we stopped mowing, the public works stopped mowing the lawns. They came over, they brought, you know, we made the phone calls, we dug up the pipe, put a patch over it, and then called somebody, and then called the contractor to come in and put a. put a patch over it and then called somebody and then called the contractor to come in and put a new piece of pipe in. That's the beauty of government. Unexpected things are going to happen. It's part of the beauty of, you never know what you're going to come into today. The key thing, unexpected things are going to happen. You've got to stay calm. Don't let them rattle you. And stay very focused on process. I'm very big on process. This is the way you handle things. If something unexpected that you didn't know could happen, that's a learn, that's what we call a teaching moment. That's a learning, a learning opportunity. Handle it the best you can. You've got to make mistakes. And afterwards, you sit down with everybody involved with it and say, okay, if this ever happens or something like that happens again, how we got to handle it? Most important thing is you've got to keep your cool.
Planning for a city is a daily duty for a city manager. How do you prioritize city plans?
I'm sorry, I missed the beginning of it.
Planning for a city, oh, I'm sorry. Planning for a city is a daily duty for a city manager. How do you prioritize city plans?
I look to the council and the budget for one. The budget is your priority list. That, many people look at the budget, is this how we're going to spend our money? Which is true, but it's also our priority list. When you're planning out a city, it has to be collaborative. It has to involve the residents, the staff, the elected officials. From a day-to-day perspective, you look at what the goal is. Very few things are one-day projects, but you keep, you keep that goal out there. I'm a big, as I said, I'm very data-driven. I'm a spreadsheet geek. My last two positions, I've had a spreadsheet that's had color-coded projects. And at risk of sounding off-topic now, are we talking with planning with land use planning or planning of simple events?
I would say both.
Daily, daily you plan.
Well, the land use point, land use planning is actually pretty straightforward because our camp, comp plan tells us what direction we need to go. Our code tells us where, what, what our goals are, what we want our city to be. When you get a proposal for a development, the first thing you have to look at is, does it comply with our comp plan? As far as day-to-day opera head, I, I know we contracted the county for other building services. I didn't see.
Yeah, so like sheriff and fire, that's county type of thing. We have an independent contractor that is our community planner. We have an engineering forum that is our city engineer. So we don't have a lot of in-house stuff.
Yes, and that's very similar to what Madison Lake. Our enge, our city engineer was contracted, our planner was contracted. And so it's very, very similar. As far as the pro, the project management and planning, the first thing that I've done in both of my previous cities is I put up a great big four-foot by eight-foot whiteboard on the wall. It keeps things top of mind. If I have to open a spreadsheet, that takes effort. I may get busy in the day. Somebody, I may walk in the door and somebody says, hey Jeff, we need, we need something. The next thing you know, I'm halfway through the day after I've put out a few fires and done a few things and done what I remembered I was supposed to do is like, oh, wait a minute, I've got to check, check my calendar. I'm going to check my list. That whiteboard is in my face. I can't forget it. It has the priorities listed. It has projects listed. It has due dates. It has items, checkpoints. But as far as planning, then that, that goes right in with, and I'm probably going to answer a question that's already, that's going to be coming. That goes in my communication with my council. I make time at minimum every other week. I offer time to each council member, one-on-one sit-down. This is where we are with these projects. This is where we are with this item. Do you have any questions? Do you have any issues that have been brought to your attention that I need to be made aware of? That way we maintain constant two-way communication individually. So as far as planning, a lot of city managers say, my plan. It's not my plan. It's the city plan. And that begins from y'all and from the residents. It starts with comp plan for the planning of development, uh, for growth. The comp, the comp plan is our bible. So, uh, how do I manage that? I reference the comp plan. I reference our goals. I reference our ordinances. And I speak to the commissioner, council members. I speak to the residents. If we need to make an amendment, that's where we bring it to y'all. And y'all decide whether or not that's the new direction the city needs to go in.
How savvy are you with information technology?
As long as it's not an Apple product, I can. Again, I, IT, it's, um, I don't code. I am not a programmer. I am not an IT professional. I don't get to those levels. However, from an operator's standpoint, I'm, I'm fairly tech, I'm pretty, I like to consider myself fairly tech-savvy. I'm fifty-five years old and I finished my master's degree in twenty twenty-one and the school made sure that we knew how to use technology. That was, again, Excel. I've written Excel spreadsheets, tapped into outside databases. So I, I'm, I'm fairly fluent with tech. As long as it's not an Apple product.
Amen. Amen.
Are you active on various social media platforms?
Not really. I, if you look at my Facebook page, about ninety percent of it is going to be pictures of my daughter. A few goofy memes. I think my last post was about two weeks ago. No, I'm sorry. It was New Year's. I did post a happy New Year's to people. In this line of work, I've never logged into TikTok. I don't, I don't even know what, how to operate it. But I'm familiar with Facebook. I know it exists. I know a lot of cities use it. It's a great tool for a municipality to convey information. Because not everyone goes to the website. But if you follow it on Facebook, you can get information to people quickly. Both of my previous cities used Facebook extensively. I didn't post to it. My clerk did, but I, I know how to post to Facebook and I know how to do Facebook Live and all of that stuff. As far as active personally on social media, I am not. It's kind of a curse of the business.
Can you please describe any experience you have, you have had with the public communications and negative social media?
I'm sorry, repeat the first part again?
Describe any experience you have had with public communications and negative social media.
The negative social media, public communication, again, both of my previous cities used Facebook as a large portion of their communication. We also use text messaging. The negative communication, you've got to monitor the Facebook accounts. What, in each of the previous cities, what we found was the course that we had to take to prevent a lot of the negativity was, we had to turn comments off. We put a disclaimer that says, if you have any comments, questions, or concerns with this information, please contact City Hall. The word-of-mouth pages on Facebook. My other, my other half was showing me, at Groveland, my mother still lives there. She was showing me how, oh, look, they're shutting down the ambulance service in Groveland because they're moving into another area because they say there are not enough calls. Okay, let's look at this. Well, the word-of-mouth page, that, it's, it's free for all. You can pull whatever you want there. And, and I looked at it and I said, well, wait a minute. Let's take a step back. Let's look at it. No, they're moving one ambulance that was stationed at this city fire department. And in Groveland, the ambulance service is a separate. It's Lake EMS and Groveland has their own fire department. So it's two separate entities. And Lake EMS leases space from the fire department. I said, they're moving one ambulance from this fire station to the county fire station. It's a mile and a half up the road because it's more central to their call volume. They're not removing it from the city. So let's back up and look at who posted it. The firefighters union.
Yeah. And by the way, where do they live, right?
Yeah, and, and the firefighter.
Exactly where do they live?
And the backstory on that is the city firefighters have been wanting to provide ambulance service, but it's been contracted out to the county EMS. And so they're, they have a vested interest in making people afraid that they don't have ambulances. So, uh, how you handle that negative, the negativity? One, don't engage in the negativity itself. Answer the prudent questions for the residents. Answer the questions, uh, that may arise from that. Provide information. Information will set you free.
This is kind of a long one.
Okay, and I, I apologize and I will disclose, um, I do have a hearing loss. Normally I am wearing hearing aids. At this particular point in time, I am unable to wear them because I just had a cancer surgery for a skin cancer and because of that, I, I can't put them in. So that's why I've been asking her.
No problem.
No, no.
No problem.
You are fine. That's all you had to say. How do you feel your ICMA certification enhances your experience as a city manager administrator when compared to individual of equivalent experience, non-certified? What are the benefits of the ICMA certification for the city manager role?
The training and the resources. ICMA, I mean, even just their, the certification is just simply an acknowledgement that you have bought into the idea that you have to stay up on things. You have to stay, that it's not, it's not just having the knowledge. It's how you utilize that knowledge. I'm, again, I've already begun the process for the credential manager certification through ICMA. I don't have enough years yet for full certification. I'm sure I'm a brief, I believe, one year away from being able to be on the candidate list and two, and three years from getting the certification. I've got a few more things to accomplish. But the ICMA credential manager, that simply says that you take your job seriously. It takes, it says you take your career and municipal government seriously. Being a member of ICMA, the opportunity to network, the ability to tap into resources. So how does it help? Immensely. I can't say, I can't speak to, I can't overstate how much it really helps because to use one of my catchphrases, it's probably overused. More heads is better, more brains is better than one. And when you've got a whole country or a whole organization of brains that have had a lot of experiences, that way we can each individually say, hey, I know how to handle that. I may not know how to handle that, but I can most surely find out with a couple of calls. And you build those networks. The ICMA is just an incredible resource for that.
During your city administrator role in Madison Lake, can you share the most challenging public dilemma you have experienced and how you managed the situation?
The mayor is already aware of this. Because my former mayor told her when he called her. I had to fire a police chief. He was a friend of mine. I got a notice from a resident, or from the mayor, that a resident had contacted him. Mayor informed the resident to call me. The resident called me. We talked for about fifteen minutes. He forwarded me some text messages, screenshots. Within twenty-four hours, I had to put my, at that time, my friend on administrative leave. I had to take his gun, his badge, his keys to City Hall and the squad car. This was an incident that should have made the news. It did not. Minnesota does not have quite the open records law that Florida does. This was the second time the police chief had gotten himself into a little hot water. The first one is still out there on YouTube. He made a video from Yellowstone National Park, a little xenophobic rant. Sixty days later, the council fired the police chief. That was a very challenging circumstance. Again, I considered him a friend at that time. However, as I've said before, my ethics will not be compromised. Mayor, again, I believe that Mayor Hane had spoken to you in a little bit more depth on that. But that was, that was probably the most challenging circumstance in my public career. Both because I considered him a friend at the time and because of the charges that were made.
You had like a third party or something assisted you with that decision?
We did, we did, we did do an outside investigation.
Yeah.
We hired an outside investigator. We called the employment law attorney from Minneapolis, out of Minneapolis. Uh, they did an outside investigation. They took about two and a half months to complete the investigation. They uncovered several of other issues. The former police chief did sue the city. The city did prevail. We were, I worked very closely with our city attorney and our outside consultant attorney to keep, keep everything as appropriate as possible.
Thanks for sharing that.
Can you please elaborate on the reasons for the restructure at Madison Lake and what the outcome was during your city administrator role?
Uh, restructuring, when I arrived at the city, one of the first things that I noticed is that my title was administrator, clerk, and treasurer all rolled into one. At the first city council meeting, I told the city council, you do not want one person authorizing expenditures, keeping track of the record of the expenditures, and writing the checks for the expenditures. Yeah, that, that, that's not a good, not, not speaking on me personally. I'm just speaking in general. In any case, that's not something you want to do. So we did change that around. I, I shed the clerk treasurer and our deputy clerk picked those up. Uh, that was one of the administrative changes that we made. We, we reorganized some of the duties related to our bookkeeper and our clerk. We instituted some policies that tracked our spending, that tracked our purchasing policies, whereas before they just simply had, everyone had a credit card, a city credit card and they just bought it. And at the end of this, at the end of the month, the statement came in and just kind of got paid. And we can't do that. So we instituted a policy for the credit cards. Uh, I called the issuers. We had the limits adjusted per where, as it was, each card tapped into one limit. So if my public works guy decided he wanted to go buy a new Bobcat, he just swiped it through. And so we, we adjusted the limits on the cards. We, we changed some operating parameters, uh, along that, put some processes in place. They really didn't have any pro, purchasing processes. It was, we need, we buy, we'll justify it later. And we kind of reorganized that to, we need, let's justify it, then let's quote and buy it after we've justified it. So, and that was the prime, the accountability in our finance system was the primary restructuring that had to be done in Madison Lake. They had money coming in. They had a good tax base. They had money coming in, they had a good tax base, they just needed to have a little organization and tracking. When we first got there, when I first arrived, we had fund balance, which was a very basic twenty-plus-year-old finance software. They did Invest in Civic Systems, which was a much more robust financial system. It allowed much more reporting and gave us a lot more insight into our spending. We were able to have more accounts, more detail, and track things individually as opposed to in aggregate.
The last one's gonna take me just a minute to read through, okay?
Sure thing.
You previously were the city manager for Madison Lake, Minnesota. Their population was one thousand two hundred sixty, is similar, I'm sorry, is similar to that of Keystone Heights, and they enjoy a thriving lake community. Unfortunately, our lakes have been mostly dry for several decades. Now, after forty years and a hundred million dollar project, we are on the cusp of having our lakes return to full capacity for our residents and visitors soon. As our new city manager and with your related experiences, what are some, what are some insights on growth, tourism, marketing, and planning you could share for setting our expectations with these exciting changes on the horizon?
First thing is, you have to get ahead of the curve on growth regulation. Minnesota is very, Department of, the Minnesota DEP is Gestapo? As a lakefront community within a thousand feet of a lake, we were only allowed to cover twenty-five percent of a lot. We wanted runoff to stay on, on the property. We don't want it in the lakes. So, with, with any growth, with any, you have to be cognizant of where water is going to go. It rains a little bit here in central Florida, north-central Florida occasionally. We have to be cognizant of where that water's going to go. Eventually, it's going to end up in a lake, whether it does so through a ground filtration, whether it does, does so through a stormwater system, but it is going to be there. You have to be, have the ordinances in place to make sure people aren't opening their oil down the storm drain. I envision Cousin Eddie cleaning out his RV in the storm drain on Christmas vacation. Because once these lakes are back, we want to keep them back. We want to keep them recreational. We want to be able to keep any benefits that we get from that. As far as marketing, I can only, I can speak to Madison, what we did in Madison Lake. The governor's fishing open every spring. He had never, he was from Mankato, eight miles up the road, but yet, his governor's fishing open was up in northern Minnesota in a different lake. Madison Lake was the most fishable recreational lake in southern Minnesota. Why didn't he come there? Short answer is, nobody ever asked him. I brought it up as a, at a meeting that I had with him as a member of the Board of Small Cities. He let, he left, he opened to the floor and, hey, does anyone else have anything? And I said, right here, Mr. Governor, when the committee comes to you next, for next year's location, I would really appreciate it if you would give some consideration to Madison Lake for your governor's fishing open. Oh, I didn't realize they were interested. Sometimes, that marketing is just asking. It doesn't cost anything. Now, not all marketing doesn't, not all marketing is free, but a lot of it can be. It's awareness, making people aware of what you have. City festivals, small city festivals can pay for themselves. They don't really cost the city much, but as far as the exposure for the city, what do we have for recreational activities? It's huge, because then, the small businesses in the city start benefiting from that. That's our job, is to make sure that our city as a whole, residents, businesses, that, that's why we do these festivals, that's why we want to have things, events, is so that our small businesses can thrive. If we don't, no small business can thrive in a town of twelve to fifteen hundred people. There's just not enough customers. You have to have outside people coming in. Got to draw them, got to give them a reason to come.
Now, Mr. Shubridge, do you have any questions you'd like to ask of the council?
I'm sure I'm going to have a thousand of them after I walk out of your room. Has any thought been given to revamping the city website?
Oh, yes.
I think I make the, bring the search engine up with it. It's hard to find.
It's a problem. We know.
We know that.
And one of the things that I noticed was when I moved to Keystone Heights, the first one that came up is one that says KeystoneHeights.info. This is not the official website. What are your, what are your two to five-year goals for the city?
Anybody?
We're gonna have a workshop on that.
We are.
We are, because we don't have those written down.
Yeah.
Well, one of, one of the things, since you've been gone, we just got back, is our downtown redevelopment, is our streetscapes needs to be finished. And if you'd have been here five years ago, it wouldn't have looked like it is today with the lamps and everything, but there's a lot more needs to be done and that's one of the things we, we have talked about and for the, about the past couple of years, we need to get that finished.
Finishes.
There is a plan, there is a plan, but it can be, you know, restructured, but there is some certain things that we need to finish.
Walkability?
The walkability, the, what do they call them, dirty things with the flowers, the plants and stuff?
The plantings, benches, walkability, parking.
Hardscapes.
Yeah, it's, it's probably about, it's close to half a billion dollars, it's sitting there, or maybe a little more, that we, our goal was to spend that this year, to finish up that chunk of money. Part of it had been started and then it kind of has stopped, but we want to go ahead and continue and it's to this downtown area from the end of one hundred and twenty-one, as far back as we can take it, into the, you know, toward the park. So, so that is ongoing.
I apologize for the chuckle. The reason that I chuckled was, you had mentioned parking and in my, some of my land use urban planning course where we watched a vignette video, the mayor of Rio de Janeiro, Brazil, very densely populated urban area.
Yeah.
Went on the record and said it is not the city's, parking is not in the city's purview.
What?
Now, that doesn't work in a smaller town because, but quite honestly, but for them, it actually worked. They eliminated all of the municipal parking lots and their traffic was alleviated.
They have light rail?
They had light rail, they have bus systems, they have other municipal transports. Everybody was parking outside and coming in.
Yeah, it's wild.
It helped their businesses because now people aren't going to that business, they have to walk past six or eight or ten of them. So, small towns, it doesn't work though. You have to have one in small towns.
Do you all have any other answers to his question on goals, things that we're working on?
Well, an ongoing goal is to maintain the heritage of the city architecturally. We have a pretty elaborate ordinance that basically was bootstrapped from a Chicago suburb down here several years ago. And while we don't have any, any zones where we can regulate, we do educate and it's called the Heritage Commission and that's sort of an ongoing thing.
I, I've seen draft plans, one for the interchange here, one hundred and twenty-one. They have engineering drawings, so we have a plan for that interchange, mostly funded by the CRA, the Community Redevelopment Agency. I've also seen a plan called the Smart Cities Master Plan. It's in draft form and it's a, a large encompassing plan, but it has not really been seen or vetted by the city council yet and certainly not by the citizens. I don't know that we'll adopt everything in it or not, but that is being worked on. There's also a parks plan that is currently in development. And what do we want to do with the basketball court, the tennis court, the pickleball, all that other stuff? So, we are, we have plans in the work, but not done.
We don't happen to have a football field outside of the high, well, the high school actually has one.
The high school does, yeah. The high school has their own.
There are two.
It's separate.
Two things in the works proposed so far, a new city hall, and that is being, a lot of people don't like that idea, they think it's a waste of money. We haven't made a decision on that. The second is smart cities and we're still working on that, but that, those two are sort of lightning rod issues right now in the community.
Another issue, what would you say the largest challenges forthcoming in the next six to twelve months that are, and up to five years perhaps? What are the significant challenges you see for the city?
Well, the lakes are gonna be coming back. That's in the works and that's gonna happen next fall. That's gonna bring more money, more business, and we already have a huge increase in traffic. So, probably growth management is probably in the next five years, the most important issue, at least in my mind.
Developers love and hate me.
We don't have that much land in the city that's really available.
There's really none.
And there's one, one guy who I, actually has some affiliation with the city, who owns both lands, he's a very, very good builder. So, we've kind of got that worked out, in, in a rough fashion. But, but it's still, it's still very much in the works and the talking stage.
I am not an advocate for Miami curbs.
Yeah.
No, that's really the biggest thing in my mind, is preparing for the, what used to be the Jim Temple property behind Brooklyn Boys.
Yep.
And the property next to Ray's Auto on Sunrise Boulevard. And the planning and zoning is dealing with it right now. Are we putting single-family homes on it? Are they allowing multifamily dwellings to go on it? How is the infrastructure gonna support it? That's all right on our front doorstep. Yeah, we have to be able to address that.
One, one of the developments, which is just north of here, is, was it fifty acres? Somewhere.
Which one?
The old Temple property. It could end up being forty-five, fifty acres if I recall.
Sounds right.
And the, the owner has talked a little bit, very casually, about a PUD, mixed-use commercial and some residential, that sort of thing.
While maintaining character, the character of the town, one of the things that comes to mind is as the town is redeveloping the downtown area, the main street area, and some of the newer areas, and it goes to that walkability, it goes, if done properly, higher density can enhance a small-town look. Done, you have the retail storefronts, you have a second story of office-based attorneys, accountants, then you'll have, have apartment, an apartment up above. The idea being the person who owns the business on the street level lives in the apartment up above.
That's the eighteen-sixties paradigm.
Yeah.
It went done properly, it can, it can really enhance a small town's look and appeal. And from a more pragmatic standpoint, higher density is infinitely better than low-density when it comes to city revenue.
Yeah.
When done appropriately. And I am by no means an advocate for sprawl or high, or just useless high-density, but in pockets.
I'd like to ask you a question.
Yes, ma'am.
Should you be hired for the position? Are you planning to relocate to Keystone?
I do have to relocate. I live in, I live in Newport, Richey, it's three-hour drive.
You know, believe it or not, I mean, I commuted to Jacksonville every day from Keystone for thirty years.
Oh, wow.
I mean, you know, I mean, it's not, it's not that bad, but I mean.
That's a little.
Yeah, I can't, I can't imagine a three-hour drive one way.
Yeah, I have to go, but believe it or not, there's people that do that. So, that was just a question I have.
Now, I, I've spoken to a few, I know that the rental market here is thin.
Yeah.
I would anticipate renting within a reasonable distance. I, I believe in being part of the community. I believe in being available in a case of emergency, I have to get here. You can't be, I can't be three hours away and say, hey, Jeff, the electric lines all fell down, what do we do?
I think Google.
Send me a picture. FaceTime Live me, let's figure it out. You can't do that. Where, in my pre, my most recent position, I was about as far away as I would want to be. It was thirty-seven miles. It was in Pinellas County, thirty-seven miles. My drive home was an hour and forty minutes. It was only fifty-five minutes to get to work, but that's because I left home at five in the morning.
I know. I do, I know that.
Yeah. So, I, I like that, I like that de-stress time, but at the same time, you need to be a part of your community. As a former real estate broker, I don't believe in coming into a new, new area and buying immediately. You gotta get to know the area where you want to be.
Yeah.
But, that is, that would be the goal.
Did your fiancee grow up in a small town?
Pardon?
Did your fiancee grow up in a small town?
No, she grew up right outside of Boston, Springfield, Massachusetts. She's, she likes the amenities of being close and Gainesville is close enough.
Yeah, we're thirty miles from everything, basically, close enough, yeah.
It's, it's, it's close enough.
Yeah.
So, it's, it's a balancing act that we have to have in our relationship because I am very much a small-town guy and she's more of a, hey, what can we go do this weekend?
There's a lot in Gainesville. College town, terrific amount of entertainment and that's what.
Okay, at risk of talking myself out of a job, potentially.
You don't want the Gators.
How many Gators do we have on the?
I've just law school.
I'm sorry about what happened two Decembers ago. UCF alone, couple times over.
Yeah, I know.
Diehard.
The G, the big G.
Good job last week.
Crazy, crazy, crazy.
Yeah, that's, my family was originally from Michigan, so I'm very pleased with this weekend's outcome.
If, if pressed, would you at least wear orange and blue socks every other week or something like that? It's a stretch.
I don't know. I don't know.
Do you guys have any more questions or?
I do have one.
Sure.
Where do you see yourself in five years?
In five, five years? Little house up over there. Again, my family is in central Florida. I did see last week's meeting. There are, I will speak to the attorney's comment. There are many reasons why someone would choose to be in a particular position in a particular place. My family is in Lake County. I have a two-and-a-half-year-old daughter. I would really like to stay close to my family. My daughter's relationship with her grandmother is very strong and I would like to keep that. We are currently about an hour and a half from my mother's house. This is an hour and a half from my mother's house in the opposite direction. So, it, it works out well. I don't want to paint a false picture. My goal is to find stability. There will eventually come a time, as does in every city, whether that be five years, eight years, twelve years, there does come a time when the city needs a different set of eyes. Hopefully, that doesn't occur very rapidly because I, again, I am very much an advocate for stability for my daughter. I want to make sure that she grows up in one place and I know that in this line of work, sometimes that's hard to do, especially in larger towns. Harder areas are for a lot of small towns.
Have you looked into the school system at all? I expect you have.
Briefly.
It's excellent.
Yeah, we have, our schools here are great. I mean, we just have one high school and one elementary middle.
Will you let me volunteer coach at the high school?
Probably.
Yeah, you bet.
I mean, it, it's compared to, I was in Jaxx for thirty-two years before coming here just now, six years ago, and it is remarkably different. I, I sense that feeling, just visiting the schools. My kids all went to public schools in Jacksonville. And, I mean, just the interactions I've had, and just even this role this year, has been amazing. And you can tell it with the kids, by the, the way they act, the way they talk to you, you know? A lot of respect, without a doubt.
Having been in the classroom, I, I understand.
You can just tell, I mean, there's a whole level of difference here, for sure.
Tony Brown can speak to the football program, but it seems to be very strong.
We have a new coach.
Yeah.
And he's got great potential.
Yeah, the weightlifting team's probably gonna three-peat state. Excellent program.
Two really nice principals that run the schools. Great lady, two great ladies that run both schools, very reachable, reasonable to work with, you know, collaborative, all that. Very impressed.
What sport would you volunteer in? Football?
Absolutely.
Oh, absolutely.
All right, okay, let's check.
Running backs, tight ends.
I, I think, think they'd find you something to do up there.
I, I, I may have, when I was Leesburg High School in Lake County, I had a young man on the team that, he wanted to be a finesse running back. He was built like a miniature Sherman tank. And I kept telling him, I said, you are not a finesse back, you are a power back. I said, embrace what you are, and you will go far. It took me the better part of a full season to get him to understand that he wasn't gonna dance his way out of a tackle, that he needed to plow through it. I told him, I said, when you're thirty, your knees are gonna hate you, but that, but the way you're built.
He was a Ron Dane running back.
Yeah, we're gonna, we're, we're gonna give the guy behind you the ball, and you're just gonna plow the field for him. But, yeah.
So, athletics are big.
Pardon?
Athletics are big in this community.
Yeah, it, the team, the team mindset, the ability, you know, the wooden, wooden on leadership is one of my coaching bibles.
One more question from me.
Yes, sir.
Reddick and Shores has a very extensive tax base.
Yes.
We don't have so much. We cannot match the pay that you got at Reddick and Shores.
Yes, sir.
You're aware of that, you've seen the pay scale, is, is that acceptable?
Sir, I believe that we can come to an arrangement that will be acceptable to all parties, should I be selected. I, generally, as a practical matter, I would rather that you pick a candidate that you feel is the best fit for your city, without dollars being either a motivator or demotivator.
All right, thank you.
Any more questions? I think we're good. Mr. Shubridge, it's great to meet you. Thank you again so much for being here today.
Thank you.
We'll talk to you soon.
FYI, when we're done interviewing today, we're gonna try to come to a decision this afternoon.
Do I stay home?
I believe, I believe a five o'clock after recess.
You read the agenda?
He did, he's checked it all out already.
Or before. Thank you, sir.
Take care. Thank you, Jeff.